Okay, well, people are signing in. I'll just say that we're opening the public hearing for site plan approval for 141 Meadowbrook Road. And Jan, I expect you'll be doing most of your presentation or...
We'll be starting with Rob Jemontson.
Oh, okay. Oh, Rob's spinning the evening with his... Good. In that case, if we can hold this to try to hold again the 30 minutes. Do you think you might be able to make your presentation as 15 or 20 and then give us ten for comments?
Yes, we're prepared to be very concise.
Okay, good. In that case, I think everybody's signed in, so we can go ahead and start. Whoever's starting, Rob?
Okay, well, I'll just make an introduction. So my name is Jan Kolestein, the architect for Graham Robinson and Dr. Genie Yu, residents of Weston. So first, I'd like to introduce Graham and Genie. And if you just say a quick word, in a minute, you'll say a quick word, just they've been residents in Weston since 2007. Secondly, we have our civil engineer, Rob Jemontson, Metro Weston Engineering, and his colleague, project engineer John Finnegan, who's here on matters of drainage and septic. And lastly, Doug Jones of Keith LeBlanc Landscaped Architects, who has been almindy landscape architecture. So we'll start with civil, do a quick presentation in the architecture, and then wrap up with a good focus on the landscaping, which is probably the more central piece of this presentation.
Okay.
With that?
Okay.
Would you still like to start with a, let's have a look at the neighborhood? So we're at Cedar Road and Meadowbrook Road. This is the locus of 141 Meadowbrook Road, on the east side of the road. The locus itself is shown on this diagram, kind of shows the photographs of the community houses and building it. The locus is on hip roof colonial, 6,500 square foot RGFA. If we dig in on the map, here, our direct abut is 51 Cedar. That's a contemporary home, has an RGFA of about 4,700 square feet. And then moving across the street to 46 Cedar, that's a relatively new Cedar shingle style home that Ken Stevens built, with an RGFA of about 13,000 square feet. 121 Meadowbrook Road is a French eclectic style home, also relatively new, has an RGFA of about 7,700 square feet. 116 Meadowbrook Road is a traditional colonial home, an RGFA of 9,200 square feet. 140 Meadowbrook Road is a hip roof colonial with an RGFA of about 11,600 square feet. And 150 Meadowbrook Road is kind of American barn style home, with an RGFA of 7,400 square feet. And our immediate abut to the north, 143 Meadowbrook, it's a cave style home with an RGFA of 4200 square feet. So it's a neighborhood that's conscious in transition. This map shows our existing conditions of the property. Again, this is the main dwelling, which is located in the northern corner of the property, fairly close to Meadowbrook Road, serviced by a pretty large driveway, a driveway that extends deep into the property. There's a little shed right there. Lot area itself is 62,000 square feet, fully conforms to all zoning requirements. The topography, for the most part, slopes from the north to the south towards Cedar Road. The back does slope to the east towards the abut on Meadowbrook Road. There's a fair amount of topographic relief, and a kind of a swale bowl feature in this location. The darker green shows a portion of the site that's primarily wooded. Lighter green shows what's maintained as long right now. There's a couple of big sized patios, things like that. I'd also point out there's a pretty prominent outcrop right along the front between the house and Meadowbrook Road, already evidence of feature. So the existing house has a footprint of 3,740 square feet, and has an average existing grade line of 205.5 feet. And the ridge of this house sits at 236.9 feet. The driveway slopes up pretty steep from Meadowbrook Road right now, so there's a good grade. And that driveway sits right on the northern property line of the abut, and it's held up by a retaining wall along that edge. Right now, the site has 9,200 square feet of impervious area, including the house, the driveway, and the shed. And there's no drainage controls on the site at all for the house and driveway right now. So if we move to the proposed site plan. The home sits in the same general location as the existing house, but it has been pushed back a little bit. This home has an RGFA of 8293 square feet, so it's an increase of about 1,800 square feet from the houses there right now. And the footprint's 5,100 square feet, which is an increase of about 1,374 square feet over the existing house. But citing this house, this house is actually sitting down deeper in the ground than is the existing home. The grade, average to grade plane existing around the new home is going to be 199.5 feet, which is six feet lower than the existing house, which allows, the roof ridge of this house is actually two feet lower than the ridge of the existing house. So the house is going to be a little bit lower and less visible from Meadowbrook Road. As I mentioned, the house is going to sit down a bit, and the grading's been done so that on this side of the house, basement meets existing grade, so you have a walkout condition there, and it matches existing grade exactly. The driveway design, you'll notice we pulled that driveway well away from the northern property line to allow for more landscaping and this zone. And the garage and the parking area is also offset from the entrance of the driveway, so it's not visible as you drive by. So it hides the driveway. And the house itself and that parking area is depressed and hidden below this large rock outcrop, which is going to be preserved entirely. So between how the house was situated, driveway design, how the grading works, we're preserving a pretty large green buffer around the property and trying to kind of hide that house and work with the existing features to screen in front of the buyers. So the driveway's actually moving over 25 feet to the south, getting it off that property line. The septic system is located down here, which is kind of a bowl area in the site, and it's the one area of the site that we are picking up the grades, basically because the water table is an issue. So we've got a fill condition down here, and we're back to existing grade at the moment of work. In terms of stormwater drainage, we're picking up the entire parking area with an infiltration system here, which is partially below the driveway and partially within the new landscape buffer zone that's being created. And we're sending the roof drainage down into this corner, which is an area of the site that really had almost nothing in terms of mature trees. And the soils were excellent down there, so the drainage system is pretty compact for this size house, so it fits in nicely down there, and it's minimal grade change down there as well. The post-development site has 10,000 square feet of impervious area, which is actually only 1,100 square feet over the new existing condition. It's only about an 11% increase. Stormwater management in terms of how the drainage system's working, we're reducing the volumes going in this direction towards Sullivan's property by about 50%. We're reducing the volumes towards Cedar Road and Meadowbrook by about 10%. So it's a substantial reduction in runoff from the site. During the site walk, which we had a week ago, I had a chance to talk to Paul Sullivan, he's here tonight, and Paul expressed one concern that I'll address right now, and that is water that comes down Cedar Road, it used to tend to flow into his driveway, which I think we've seen this a lot in this particular area of town. So what we've done, and Paul added a berm over his driveway, which I guess has improved the situation quite a bit, but he's worried about it worsening again over time. So we've somewhat bermed up along Meadowbrook Road, and also where our drainage system is now, there's an existing depression down there, we've added a little bit of a berm too, so whatever runoff that goes over land and collects down here, the soils are good, it should infiltrate, and by adding a little bit of a berm, we've provided some stores here to make sure it doesn't flow to Sullivan's driveway. So that's the Cliff Notes version of the site engineering. Will there answer questions or let...
No, no, we'll just...
Okay.
Thank you, Rob. So you saw the outline of the proposed house, L-shaped building. This is the rock, you see more of that in landscape features, and Meadowbrook Road's right here. Garage coming out, and the house is recessed. I'll just go through the floor plan just to orient this. Pops out. So here's the L shape. So you're looking at this and that recessed piece. So I'll come back just to understand how it looks. So this sets back, it's a classic shingle and stone house. Rob has covered the metrics on the roof ridge, which is two feet lower than the existing house. Here, at this end, the ridge that you see is more like about 32 feet. The side view, this way, you see the garage that's pushed back. The existing topography, we're working, as you pointed out, meeting existing grade here. This ramps up, this is a gap between the rock and where the existing house was. And then we come up, and then the land comes up about another five feet, so we're leveling that area out behind the rock. So we sort of work with the land. What you're going to see on the back is the most dramatic elevation, where this is where, this is roughly four to five feet below the grade in front of the house, and the existing land dramatically drops off this existing grade. This is another existing peninsula that sticks out, and we're putting a covered porch on it, which we call a belt gear, that looks down at the lawn area, the play area, where the septic is. The septic fills in a swell in here. So we have a walkout, band room, jacked in, two-story, octagonal breakfast room structure, and this is the piece that you would see on that design. The last back end of the house, which faces north, and Meadowbrook itself, abuts a large stand of evergreen, of existing trees. So for the most part, it is shielded from the neighbors, and you have the backside of the garage, the end of the house, and there's sort of a one and a half story mudroom structure along here. So this is the main wing of the house, the garage, and sort of a one-story piece here with a little corridor connecting the second floor of the garage and then a back stair office, and that's the connector to the cover porch. So that's the part.
Jan, could you just go back to the site plan for a second?
Yeah.
Get a better idea of how that whole thing is going inside?
Yeah. I'm just going to jump to a more illustrative version of the site plan, which Doug will talk about in just a minute. So what we, first, we're looking at is the large outcrop, which comes up almost 10 feet, covers most of the first floor. It's also, as Doug will explain, is going to do a lot of shielding of the garage massing and partnering, so when you drive by, you will get a clipped view of the garage. The existing topography, the existing house is here, and the existing topography dramatically comes down, so it's just a reshaping to get the, moving it out maybe about eight feet, just so that the ramp for lawn mowing equipment is more gendered than the existing. We're matching existing here, this is all existing there. We are, in order, we're bringing up the grade slightly here to have a perambulation around, and so there'll be a wall there. This is the lower area, which is essentially 10 to 15 feet lower than the courtyard, which itself is getting cut down. A lot of the cut down is in fact occurring where the existing house is. So there's a garage and a basement, so part of that's already partially excavated in this area, and part of it is slab upgrade. But right now, there's a very steep slope up here, and I'll let Doug Jones probably expand on that. So with that, I'll...
Can I just add one thing to you, Jan, that I should have mentioned during my talk?
We did our soil testing out here. We did, Jan has to do a bunch of test holes, we did the footprint of the house, and the results were very good. We were down almost in all the holes down below the both basement floor elevations. It does not appear that there's any ledge issues. I have a letter that we submitted to Betsy and to...
Okay, thank you.
So our neighbor to the Weston Gates had their foundation pinned to ledge, and when they did work down at Meadowbrook, the seam connected, and they had a lot of rumbling and cracking, and we're very concerned. So when we met with them, as well as Sullivan's or the Outwoods, we addressed their concerns, and we got this formal letter saying, we can write in specific action, no blasting. And we had very little hammering to do. We had one point about here where we don't know we hit a boulder or ledge about one foot above our basement slab. So it's not on the footing, it's in the middle, it might be a knob or it might be a boulder. The only other hammering we would do would be to clean up for the design of Doug Jones, the edge of this rock, so we can plant things against it and unify it. So we estimated the amount of hammering, because there was questions raised at the site walk, because this understanding is about the amount of hammering, about a week and a half, maximum. We might get it done in a week, but it's just a cleanup here and a knock there. So we just wanted to address that, and we're very relieved that we don't have drilling and blasting.
What's the average height above natural grade right now?
The what?
Average height?
Of the...
Height above average natural grade, for the charge. But what's the height of the building?
Oh, great, great. So the height of that is...
Yeah, what's the height above average natural grade?
It is 234.83 feet, or one foot eight inches below the abut.
Okay.
What's the total height of the house?
Total height of the house, depending on where you measure it...
From the average natural grade?
It is 35 feet.
Right. 140, actually 35.4.
Right.
35, yeah.
Feet, or inches?
Rob, you had mentioned a problem with water coming down the road.
Well, there's no street drains.
Right, and then you're going to put a berm that will keep the water on the road going onto property.
Yeah, what happens, David? A plate running there?
Yeah.
What happens is this, the water flows off Cedar Road, and it kind of comes down, you know, the gutter line. Sullivan's driveway is low like this, so it actually tends to cut across like this. So we're just putting a berm, like, it's not like a dam, it's like a foot high, you know, so it'll be a gradual, you know, thing, just to keep the water in the street we want and not to have it going down the driveway.
So even though that's a bowl, it drains very well?
Yeah.
The lawn area?
Yeah, this one particular site...
Not that area, but...
The lawns, the lawns are...
You know how in the site it comes down and then kind of goes back up to the road?
Right.
Didn't seem to be any sign of wetland.
Oh, no, yeah. It drains fine.
That's right here is the big dip.
It has really good soils there.
Is it just rain, rain on the road?
Just rain on the road itself, there's no street...
It's not coming off.
Well, Cedar is lower than Meadowbrook, so it comes off to Meadowbrook.
The water comes, and this road's pretty steep here, so it comes flying down Meadowbrook Road, it makes the corner, it's going down Cedar Road. Typically, what it does, if it stays where it's supposed to, is it goes down, and then the other side of this property is, I guess I still call it the grace property. And there's a big meadow there, it goes right into Meadowbrook.
All right, we're ready for the landscape.
How much time do we have on the site?
You've got two minutes.
Two minutes, great. So we had a site walk, and subsequent to the site walk, we added some trees, you may have this plan, and we sent it to the town planner. So this is an updated planting plan. There are a couple of other drawings in there that may make it easier to follow, some of the things that I'm going to be describing.
I'm going to move here.
Kim, can you see what's...
Pass. I will do my best not to repeat some of the things you've already heard, but the new driveway is relatively flat, and it's tucked back behind this big piece of ledge. I'll be able to see that in the site sections. And I have more than anybody required. So the house is approximately five feet lower than the existing house is. That allows us to use the existing ledge to screen it. The nature of the grading plan, there is, the leach field is in fill in the bulk of the rear yard, but the existing grade, we're actually not touching this 190 contour. So when you step out onto the small terrace of the rear yard, we're meeting grade, it also allowed us to preserve the existing contour between a covered porch that's sitting up on this existing peninsula of land, so there are trees being preserved. Look at the perimeter of the site, as well as within the site. There's an extensive buffer that we're proposing at the limit of grading. That's made up of a combination of evergreen and deciduous trees, as well as deciduous shrubs. Those have been selected, for the most part, to be trees that would be adaptable to semi-shaped conditions, so it includes hemlock, Norway spruce, liver pine. That's the bulk of the evergreens that will provide the screening along Meadowbrook and Cedar Road. In addition to that, we have dogwood, witch hazel, and the additional trees that I mentioned since we met on site. There's an existing lope, which we just, we're touching on in terms of the character of the soils on site, the way that's expressed in the vegetation. So there's sassafras that's growing along with red maple. We're supplementing that with additional sassafras, as well as beyond the limit of grading between roadway and the proposed lawn, we're doing underplanting of red maples, the sassafras I mentioned, as well as witch hazel. Along the rear of the property, as Jan described, we're really trying to stay fairly tight to the house. There's a seven-foot wide path that's being proposed for maintenance. There's a boulder wall that will, at its maximum, be less than four feet, that allows us to create a fairly level path along the house. Coming out of the covered porch, there's a series of steps. These are fieldstone stairs, just in turf, that provide a comfortable path down to the lower lawn area. There was discussion of the existing driveway, there's actually a retaining wall that straddles the lot line, so there's a hemlock hedge on the abut's property. In relocating the driveway, we've preserved the grades to, so as to not detrimentally affect that existing hemlock hedge. There's a secondary layer of screening that's composed of our lighting and spruce trees. I think that's my two minutes, but I'm happy to talk about lighting, if that's an interesting So the lighting, you'll see within the package that I provided you, and I apologize for the scale, but I will use the plan and the funding that you described, and I'm going to do the architecture in simple terms. There are wall sconces that are proposed on exterior doors. There are two of those at the front door, there are four, so one on each side of the garage door. So a total of six wall sconces in the entry corridor. In addition to that, there are two ceiling-mounted light fixtures that are proposed on that side of the building. There is a wall sconce at the rear mudroom door, heading over to the covered porch area, two wall sconces that are on either side of the door, and then there are columns supporting this roof. On each of those corners, there is an additional sconce, so four, one on each of those corners. In addition to that, there are downlights that are proposed to the ceiling. You see, there are two housings, so there's a double fixture on each of those. Within the covered porch area, a couple more wall sconces at this basement level door, providing access to the rear lawn. So the architectural lighting, we end up with 17 of the sconces, two ceiling-mounted down fixture, downlights, and a total of four on these two housings that are within the covered porch. The landscape lighting, there are three types of fixtures. We're proposing a stone pier, that would be four feet tall and 30 inches square, include a stone plaque with the address number. We're proposing a downlight that would mount it on the pier to illuminate the number. That's the only of that fixture type. There are two kinds of pathlights. I will quickly look back just to let you understand. So I call it, you know, like a puck, that's the light that is mounted on here. And then we have a pathlight, which is, creates a uniform circular distribution of light. In addition to that, we have more of a directional light. Describe it as a flashlight on a stick, I guess, but it's something that is aimable. So in both cases, they're shielded, we're directing light toward the ground. I'll describe the one that I call the flashlight on a stick first, which is those stone stairs that I described are fairly long in length, and we wanted to be able to project light along their length, so there are a total of five for each one of those stairs. That's the only location that that fixture is proposed. There are some additional, the second type of fixture, which is more of a symmetrical distribution. Those are proposed as stairways coming from the covered porch, coming from the mudroom, providing access on the front of the house from the driveway to the mudroom, as well as in association with the path, ramp actually, that's sloping from the upper first floor area down to this basement area. I think I can, as succinct as I could be on lighting, quickly move to the rear of your package. There are a couple of elevations as well as site sections, just to reiterate on some of the earlier comments. You can see that this piece of ledge that is being preserved is doing a great deal to screen the garage and the house, as well as the maneuvering space associated with the garage getting in and out of the driveway. You can see the trees that are being preserved, as well as the new vegetation. That's all along Meadowbrook Road. You can also see that the driveway, its new incarnation will be relatively flat. Along Cedar Road, as was described, the grade dips to that existing low point and then rises back up. And as you saw in the site plan, there's a fairly significant buffer that we're preserving in that area. I think my time is up, but I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
All right, well, before we get to questions from the board, Dave, what are your comments about the engineering, site engineering?
Stormwater is fine. You know, it was nice to see the conversation with the neighbor that had added details. It's not really, it's not changing anything down there, it's just reinforcing what's already happening down there, which is, you know, the water isn't going on, and Mr. Sullivan's property is going to work.
But otherwise, it looks as though they're taking care of all of the stormwater management issues?
Yes. I mean, it's shrunk a bit since we first started, too. You guys were aware of that.
What has shrunk?
The development.
The development, the program, the driveway. The development, the program, the driveway.
Or it has?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe larger?
I'll just tell you very quickly, when we first met with your friends who were David and Kim, they gave us very constructive feedback that, that you would probably not react well to the size of our lawn, the size of our motorport, and the fact that the peninsula of the covered porch had been raised two feet, by the words of Paul, or sort of three things, that they alerted us. And it was right there and then very easy to fix. We shrank the lawn area, increased the buffer zone, and brought the limit of grading further away from Cedar Street. We also decreased the motorport, which is a big rectangle, reduced it so it was fully behind the rock, introduced a curve. And then lastly, we dropped the covered porch two feet, so we were leaving existing natural grade, which also allowed us to preserve. So the result of that, we were able to save, I believe, fifteen existing trees, of which six or eight were deciduous. So, they just scared us in no way, in any way.
Okay. Who did you do that?
No, I mean, we did that, but in this case it was driven out. It was easy to do, and our clients, Graham and Jeannie, were amenable, there was no, you know, you know, too much thinking about it.
Okay. So, Kim, what do you think about the landscape?
I, I think it's a good mix of plants. I think that evergreen trees are still a little bit too small. So you have a lot of eight-foot to ten-foot, and we usually like to see ten to twelve, twelve to fourteen's.
Okay. We could certainly adjust that.
What about the arborvitae along the driveway?
Well, so it's an odd condition there. The property line is a retaining wall, and there's an existing mature stand of evergreen trees on the neighbor's property. So what we really need to fill in is that, the trunks.
But there are different kinds of arborvitae. Is this, are these the?
These are the columnar ones. Those, the single-stem ones which we used over in Sears.
Oh, okay, so they're, are they that, the kind that flop over when they get?
No, no.
I have three big ones that were just installed last spring.
I've been surprised at how well they weathered all of them, so.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't even.
The green giants.
Yes, green giants, right, and they're single leader, and, and these are big, big trees. They didn't flop once. Maybe the lower branches got weighed down, but they have lower branches.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I heard from the gazes, and so I, I know what their concerns are. Their concerns are that screening along the driveway and the blasting, you know, that's, I'm sure that comes as no surprise to anybody.
I got an email from Peter yesterday, he was glad to see that. Yeah, on the blast, I can only address the blast, can I leave it to him?
Yeah.
So, Kim, you're suggesting changing it to fourteen?
The sizes, yeah.
From fourteen to sixteen?
And there is space, if you eliminate the row of spirea in front of the arborvitae along the driveway, you could swap out some of those arborvitae for more of the Norway spruce, or any of the other evergreens. So there's not essentially three, four, five, six of them.
Okay, we could certainly do that. I mean, the.
So I think Graham, Jeannie, that's more than reasonable, and I would recommend your agreement?
Say something.
We will take Kim's recommendations into the.
Any other suggestions? Comments? Then, board comments?
Who's going first?
Well, you and I are on the sidewalk, so I think.
Go, take it, Roy.
You're the lady here, I agree with you, I'm lying, and it's not.
Somebody, you know.
You guys knew what to plant first, I won't know this. No, I, I thought it was, I was really happy that you all listened to the consultants. Clearly, there was a lot of work done upon this, and I appreciated the saving of that big rock feature in the front, which is really such a pretty outcrop, if you drive by it, it would have been a shame if we lost that. So, great that that was preserved, plus it is very functional, it's gonna really block a lot of that house. And of course, I couldn't believe how bad the driveway was worth the existing driveway, with that incredibly forty-five degrees, steep angle, and right on the property line.
Yep.
And going out and back too, so it was nice to see that whole thing get moved over. The paved court seems, we were just discussing that, there's that extra little part over there, but I'm not gonna argue too much about that. Probably the thing that I had the most trouble with, and I actually had this in the sidewalk, was that the side facing Cedar Street is where it, it kind of doesn't look as natural, that whole, you have the lawn, which is now all flat, and then it just seems to be a very steep drop-off and, and very rigid, and it's, does that make sense to you?
You mean the facade?
No, no, not the, not the house, I'm sorry. You know what I'm talking about.
Grading down to the septic system?
It's right here, because, you know, everything else is kind of gentle, and then from standing on Cedar Road, as you stand here now, it's all deciduous trees, and I just give you, you're gonna see this thing that comes out like this, it goes straight down and has a whole bunch of hillbillys or something on it. And I don't know how you can make that maybe somehow look more natural, because you've left enough of the site to look natural.
A couple of comments, one, which we discussed on site. There's one beach on the site, which I think we were all thrilled to discover, and we've introduced a boulder wall to help preserve that. I think that's one of the things that will sort of help break up that land. The other is that if you look at the nature of the existing contours, they're really, you know, almost concentric with what it is that we're proposing. So, I think, you know, we, as, as we look at it, you know, you can see this 189 and 188 contour, and that's the grading that is associated with the leach field. If I were to dash that on, you know, it's a rectangle right beneath it. So what we've tried to do is, just as you're suggesting, something that will feel more organic and more in keeping with the existing topography. In addition to that, the planting is, is not really spirea and low things. You know, we just discussed that all these evergreens are gonna get a little bit bigger than what they were proposed at originally. In addition to the evergreens, there are dogwoods, and birmums, and witch hazels. So I think the combination of the planting is really gonna go a long ways to softening that. That the, that the planting isn't sort of a hedgerow, that it's more of a, you know, a more organic composition of planting, and that it isn't just on that bank, that it sort of filters out under the existing wood.
I'd sort of agree with her.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm looking at the contour, and, you know, it's, it is, it, it, it is going to have, it's not gonna be, it's not a natural form. At its highest, the berm is gonna be about six feet. And what I wonder is, what is the ground cover on that slope? What, what, it's gonna, it's gonna appear along Cedar's road, what is the, you've got plants arranged along it, but what is the, what's gonna cover the slope?
Well, my thought was that it would be densely planted with the plant materials that are proposed, so we could certainly, you know, one of the things that I'm nervous about is, you know, the, the existing woodland, it really is, I'll call it forest duff, right? So it's pine needles and leaves and.
Periope.
So I think, you know, to introduce, you know, a big bank of ground cover, we'll allow it.
I'm not advocating covering the ground cover. I'm just, I'm wondering what is covering the ground?
The, the density of the trees and trubs that are proposed.
Yeah. Think that'll hide that berm?
Yes, and I think, you know, even more so if we're increasing the size of materials.
The concern is that you're gonna see a plateau that sort of goes.
Yeah, the old Indian mound, you know, some of those bad septic systems you drive by and you see.
I mean, it's not proposing a bunch of things, you know.
No, I mean, we can certainly explore, you know, as was suggested, that the contour might undulate a little bit.
A little bit, rather than just.
Yeah, we can break the pure shape of the curve, maybe.
Try and make it look.
Break it, inflect it, make it feel more, more natural.
Is it also that all the plantings are on the.
Right on.
The contour, rather than some on and some off?
Well, but he just sort of explained part of that, because you don't really see, you just see little green balls up there, which doesn't really interpret anything yet, but he's got a lot of deciduous, sort of, so you get all these different forms coming up, which, Kim has looked at this, so she's looking at it. Yeah, and it's pushed back, but the natural, if you look at the limit of work line, this swath is gonna remain that forest stuff beneath the existing woodland, and it's only at that edge that it's the new planting and the brooding. I mean, one thing that we have required in the past is a combination of like pine needle mulch with seed of native woodland. Seed mix, that just makes, right, a shred like mulch, but it has enough seed in it that will bring up, you know.
Till the mother nature takes over, so I think that's a great idea.
We knew there would never be any dyed red bark down there.
No. And, 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 I mean, we had already thought that was, I mean, the only area that's sort of remote from everything we've been discussing is this infiltration area, and that's exactly what we had planned, you know, we're deserving that, you know, in addition to the witch hazel that are proposed.
About the generator, how, that's what's about lot line, it's right there.
It's the decibel level, what, can you put, it's the, it's the same generator we're using at twenty-four Meadowbrook. It's a, it's got a sound attenuation, and it's, it's much further away from, from the neighbors than Meadowbrook. So we'll get you the stats on that.
But it's not more than forty decibella than that, right?
Right, no, it'll meet that criteria.
Is there, proposing, me proposing the irrigation system for the lawn? Is it a well?
We haven't discussed, but.
It's gonna have to be a well.
Yeah.
It'd have to be a well, because of water budget, budget, you know, water in, water out, there's plenty of water, water for the lawn.
That's a, I'm sorry, we didn't talk about it earlier, but it's a standard condition.
Okay.
That has been on all of the site.
So that'll go in.
Yeah.
And Betsy will get you the permission on the generator decibels.
So, I have a couple of concerns, I mean, I think you've done a great job of working with the natural features of the site. But again, that whole lawn area and that berm, I just think look very unnatural and don't work with the rest of the site. I know you're having to deal with the septic system there, but I just think that you can do a lot better, and maybe it's a question of how you meld the natural with the unnatural, but in my mind, it doesn't work. And it also creates, that's the most exposed part of the house, right there where this flat area of a bowl is. So I, I just think it's creating a lot of problems, and I think we could do better. The other thing that really bothers me, and it's hard to imagine that it was even larger, is the parking court or whatever you wanna call it. I just feel like, I mean, I know you can't see it from the street, but you're gonna drive up the driveway, and there's just gonna be this huge parking lot in front of the house, and I wonder if there is either a way that you can break it up, or if, you know, or if you could get rid of this whole piece right here, do you really need that? Or could the edge of the asphalt be there, but it's just, it's huge in my.
These are interesting, because that's.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, look at the.
So, I, I, I've heard the board loud and clear, and we will explore ways of softening, making this, the proposed grading feel more organic. So, I think that's accomplishable. The parking, there is a three-story garage and, you know, the backing space that is associated with getting those vehicles so that we don't have to back down the Meadowbrook Road. So there's circulation space that is proposed. In addition to that, the, the composition is that, you can see the paving associated with the portico actually finds its way into that parking court and helps define some guest parking area that we, that we, we propose that those would be sort of tucked back behind the ledge. In addition to that, there's a nanny space, which is the piece that is to the side of the garage, as, as well as snow storage.
So our, our client, Jeannie, you would like to make a statement on the parking?
So, I'm Jeannie, you're like, I'm gonna be in terrible place. Now, we currently, Graham and I live on Newton Street, which I think everybody knows, fifty-first Street in Weston. And we have a, you know, relatively small driveway right now, and with, you know, we own three cars, my nanny has a car, you know, I'm at work every day, so we need to have this number of vehicles in addition to somebody coming and cleaning the house. You know, we're constantly shuttling cars in and out, if you want to drive down Newton Street home to the church, you know, wait for somebody else to pull out. I have two little kids, one who's six and one who's nine, and I wanna make sure that they can be let off, you know, if they're getting dropped off by somebody, I want them to be in the driveway, I don't want them to be let off on Meadowbrook Road and, you know, be walking in the driveway not knowing who's gonna be coming back. So, you know, my parents come and visit, they have a car, I mean, I think that just having lived on Newton Street with the small driveways, it's, it's important to us to have enough space for guest parking and the cars that we own that we know are gonna be there all the time.
You realize how big this is? I mean, it's sixty feet by forty feet. It's, it's not, it, it's, you could have your children dropped off with box trucks, it's, 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 it still has room to maneuver. It's, it's, it's a very large area, and I think the question is, you know, maybe you wanna rethink whether you really need all of it, you know, in, in asphalt. That, you may be surprised at how big that looks when it's actually laid out.
Can you keep in mind those, to just think that, assume there are three cars parked in the outside area from seven AM to seven PM every day. And so that part of that driveway is full almost all the time, so take that much out in thinking about when a delivery comes, when someone comes to clean the house, that sort of thing.
Are you suggesting maybe changing the materials so we don't see that much asphalt?
It's a big, unreleaved, unbroken area, it's just, it's gonna look like, you know, Utah. It's, it's, it's huge. It, it, it needs.
Well, Janet, that is a good question. Would we be happy with doing something like we just had at the Newton Street proposal, where you have a turf which you can actually thrive on and staple?
You could get a different material.
A different, yes, would a different material make you more happy? I mean, I can understand they're a little sensitized because they live on Newton Street, so they're all nervous about that.
Visually, it would break up all of this asphalt.
It would. I mean, him, the passersby don't see this.
No, I know. I, I normally would be totally against it, but for the reasons that you just suggested, it disappears behind.
Yeah.
It does, but it's, it's something that has to be managed too, you know, it's, in terms of the stormwater runoff.
Yep.
There must be a better way to handle it.
Well, I think we have a stormwater.
Oh, you've managed it, but you could manage blast.
Of course, of course.
So do you, what do you think about the idea about?
Mixing up the materials.
Yeah, mixing materials on it, so that you wouldn't have.
You might have some pavers and limit the amount of asphalt.
Maybe the entrance portion is a different material.
Yeah.
Where the parking.
I mean, we're totally amenable to that, I think there's a functional, and also the history of living on Newton Street for existing residents that.
And I will say, parking around that house was scary during the sidewalk.
This wants to be, you know, clear, I guess, but there, there might be opportunities, like, I'm not sure over here on this side that, you know, that you really need to go all the way, you could, you could pull it out a little bit so that you're not right next to the steps. You know, that sort of thing, it's not, I doubt if anybody's gonna be over there, and if they are, they still have plenty of room to, to park without sticking, without the backend sticking to the driveway. You know, just whittle it, and I think it would help a lot.
Right, so, well, give us another chance, we'll massage that, along with the, the sharp geometric form of the berm at Sears. I think, I think we can soften both conditions and get it in place.
And Adam, I don't know if this, I think it helps a little, but you might wanna just look at Kim's garage, see if that helps you. For one thing, the car closest to the house can pull out without being right next to the house, and allows you more room for greenery in the house, so.
Yeah, I know it's a great idea, and it was in one of the versions of our early master plan. The thing that, that made us regret it was the weird setbacks, the property line had a kind of a weird thing, and we're trying to squeeze our AC unit, everybody's tight to the, to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Which of course is our fault, because we're building this. What? I mean, you know, we know we created our own problems.
I mean, you know, we know we create our own problems.
It'll be played back at Infinitum.
Anyway, that was a good architect. Is it the other one?
Okay.
Yeah, so those two things are very doable. But, but I don't have to do it, it's Doug Jones that has to do it.
I can do it, you can.
In that case, I'm thinking what we do is continue the hearing... Well, first of all, let me ask, are there neighbors here that would like to make comments? Yes, sir, could you just identify yourself?
Yes, Paul Sullivan, up in Hewon Cedar Road. So we appreciate all that you've been doing, and there are just a few concerns that we have. Since the sidewalk, somebody has driven up Cedar Road and just mashed the dirt, and all the water is rolling right back into our driveway, it's, it's not a solution. But it is a concern, we need somebody to make sure that the additional water that's draining into that area doesn't add to the water problem we are in.
Yeah.
So that's one issue. The other is, they're moving the house, I guess it's north and east, to the higher point on the land, although it's a lower house, which is nice, it's going to be quite a bit higher and closer to us, which will block the afternoon sun. And so I'm wondering if the trees that are put in there are at a level that aren't too high, that won't completely block our sun out, and plus, if you're looking at the roof of our house. So I think in the choice of the trees between our house and your house could, could make for a good block, but if they go too high, it'll add more, more problems for us.
From the sidewalk, I get the impression that it was the trees on your property that would probably end up shading your house much more than any additional trees.
Where's your house on the sidewalk?
Is it fifty-one Cedar?
Fifty-one Cedar, yes.
Is this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to this one.
So the house is closer to us and then higher on.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
The new house is from where your original house is.
Yeah.
But along here is a very mature, tall line of evergreens that completely blocked the view of our structure, and also casting shadows, I believe you're in shadow as we speak.
Well, a little bit, but not much, it's not as green-eyed.
But our, our structure will be significantly lower than the existing trees. So they're doing more shading than the...
Well, that's not... The house will be moving quite a bit more in the direction of blocking the afternoon sun.
Can I show you from this, can I look there? I'm Doris Sullivan. And when we look out, our office windows are this way, and when we look out this way, there is a hill, and the sun goes down in this direction of the house presently. But this house now is probably over here, quite considerably farther over here. So these trees are not the trees that block the sun from my kitchen windows. It's, the sun usually sets right over here, so, and this house is a little higher, it's going to block the sun. And what we're asking is not for great big tall trees to be put here, but since the sun is going to be blocked anyway by the building, if we could have it not block so early in the afternoon, perhaps is one trying to say.
But isn't the house actually lower, because I'm confused, I hear it's higher.
It's lower, but it's closer.
Higher on the hill.
So if, if I'm this tall but this far away from you, and I'm only this tall but I'm really up against you, it's that, so...
One of the things I'll highlight, I guess, the, the covered porch is the most prominent piece in relation to their home. And again, that's a, a single-story structure with a fairly shallow pitched roof. With regard to the screening that's proposed, the landscape plan is, you know, the basis for it is that both Jeanne and Graham, presumably the Soulins, would like to have some privacy. So what we had proposed were evergreen trees that are, you know, as well as some flowering trees that are providing screening in that part of the property. You know, if, if it's something, I mean, I, I think that we could probably provide you privacy with trees that were in the twenty to thirty-foot height range. You know, some of the things that are proposed there now are Norway spruce that are going to get considerably taller than that. So I think potentially we could address that concern by just specifying some different evergreens in association with the screen porch, or that, I'm sorry, the cover.
That's good.
That sounds good.
Yeah, so just to, to pick something, and I'm going to say in that twenty to thirty-foot range.
Yeah, okay, so you're going to work with Kim on that?
Absolutely.
So we, Doug will get in touch with you and...
And actually, you don't mind my saying so, the house is going to be there. It's, to us, a lot more attractive than the house that we're sitting in.
Well, thank you, thank you.
You're hired back.
I think the house is double, it isn't, it's just that we don't want to lose, you know, our sun, so...
What's the total luminance, because he and I are blind, and this is the tiny spot I've got.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sixty thousand something. Sixty thousand seven hundred or something.
Just one, just asking.
Yeah, it's just over sixteen, we try to keep it under...
Any other comments? Good. Then, maybe what I could suggest is that we...
I'm bad at counting, it's easy to just...
Continue the hearing to review the draft conditions of approval, and, and in the interim, take a look at the landscape changes that we talked about and the, and the parking court changes that we, that we suggested. Work with Kim and...
The Soulins.
And then submit to Betsy so that we can take a look at those things when we're reviewing the draft decision, so we don't have to drag you into it for an extra meeting.
Right.
And if that's okay with everybody, does that sound like a reasonable idea?
It's planned.
Okay. Then, we'll schedule the continued hearing till what date, Betsy?
I don't know how long it will take you to work things out.
Less than a week.
We're not having a meeting yet.
I know, but I mean, once you have, you're in demand, so we'll be ready for your next...
I mean, as soon as you can get it to Kim that, you know, and gets a review, that's better.
It's really, won't be, take us long. And, and we'll also be in touch with Paul and Doris to get the right specification and size of trees, and then we're going to get all that back to Betsy and Kim and get your feedback, and just let you get that at least as soon as we can.
Okay, so what, when are we continuing to then?
To the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, what time?
Fantastic.
Eight o'clock?
Uh, yeah.
We'll continue then to, to, to eight o'clock on the fifteenth.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
That's the same time you get...
We'll make a motion that we will continue to...
We're just continuing your date, sir.
Sure.
So, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're one and a half.
You know, you know where the mall is.
Wait a minute, what's the issue while they're here?
I mean, maybe you could lock that half a foot.
Yep.
One more comment.
Thank you for taking care of the city. Push it down a little, and I hope you have an eleven-foot difference between the basement and first floor.
We're all set.
And I know that you want to be a little higher than the garage and the parking area.
Guardrails, you're going to talk about guardrails.
Thank you. One step. So, I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's any way you could...
Let me see if I can push it down six inches down the step.
If it helps.
Yeah, absolutely.
All, all...
You're just way too amenable.
Well, you know, you know what's interesting? It looks great at the end anyway, so it's kind of like...
The difference is it was six inches...
Thank you so much for listening to our consultant or camp.
My whole focus is a light.
Well, I would like to thank you because there were major changes made.
Did you just hear that?
Trying to drive six inches, that's a great little idea.
Do we lose...
Oh, really?
Everybody left.
They were so sensitive from living on Newton Street.
The three of us looked at it and knew, said it's not happening, not even close.
Oh, really?
And they, yeah, but it was funny, they didn't have to like change it that much to get it settled. It really was, right, like it was, like, when he dropped the porch thing, all this grading.
They were, they were basically where the porches, they were micro-grading like anywhere from eight inches to a foot, and that resulted in a huge number of trees coming out of there.
Wow.
And we all just kind of looked at it and said, no.
No.
Well, nice job.
All you consultants.
Well, it was good that they also listened, but...
They don't want to do that.
The porch.
Well, and, and I was insistent on where the, the beach was on the front.
Yeah.
So they did go out and find it, and...
It was like that big?
Yeah, yeah, but it's...
A little worse than...
A very nice tree.
They all look alike to me, unaware.
Well, it had that elephant trunk kind of quality.
Yeah, and still have the little leaves of chardonnay, also chardonnay. I figured I'd leave you two tree people. Betsy's yawning.